Call to order the meeting of the Hanover Borough Finance and Personnel Committee for March 19th, 2025. First thing on the agenda will be a public comment. And we have Mr. Holt.
Chairman Rock Holt, third board. See on the agenda, you're going to take some action concerning the gasification plant that's been discussed for some time, has been proposed for one site, didn't make it, and now you don't know where exactly. It's kind of like the hot potato, whose neighborhood's going to get it around here? And I think before you vote on proceeding with this permit, that you should have a public hearing, that people can come and express their feelings now, before it gets too far down the road. We spent a ton of money on permitting and lawyers and whatever, and then people don't want it. And that's sincere, sir. That's, that's just, people don't know enough. And yeah, there has to be something done about forever chemicals, but as I read more and more, there's new technologies that are emerging that are further upstream than the sewage treatment to remediate what are known as PFOS and PFAS and forever chemicals. And then, sir, I mean, again, on page five of this document from your bidding documents, you know, it was a little disturbing to read that, and I'm hope you're, and I bring this up because I hope you're not going to do it when the 44 Frederick Street project comes up. Because I know you care about the taxpayers' dollars, I've heard you talk about it. I think everybody has a different perspective about how to go about it. But I read this, and in the pre-bidding, somebody asked, well, what's the cost of this project going to be? And they were told exactly how much the borough was willing to spend on the renovation of 33 Frederick, $3 million. And when you look at the paperwork, when you look at the bidders, usually there's one guy that comes under, way under, and you say, we're going to throw him out because it's not serious, it's got flaws, whatever, or he's got us, he's gaming us, he's going to come back with all kinds of change. Nobody came under $3 million. Everybody was over, not one bid. And I think it's because you told them, hey, you get 300 million bucks, 303 million bucks for this project.
300 million?
And it's, it's just, the cost overrun's ridiculous, and people say, oh, it's only 1%. This is only 1%. Well, 1%, and 1%, and 1%, and 1%, and sooner or later, you get 15 and 20%, and it adds up. And I'm just, you need to take a different approach to the way you bid for the 44 Frederick. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all we have, right? You want to check with online, please?
If you're joining us in one line, you're free to unmute yourself if you'd like to address.
Number three in your program, if you're following along, is announcement of an executive session?
Public Safety Committee had an executive session this evening from 6:00 PM to 6:35 involving a step three grievance under section 708A2 and 5 of the Sunshine Act. Hanover Borough Council had an executive session this evening from 6:35 to about 6:55 involving a discussion about the exchange of real property between the Borough and North Ridge Associates under section 708A3 and 4 of the Sunshine Act.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number four, which will be interviews for the Planning Commission vacancies. We have five people who are interested. Is everyone here? If you're here, please raise your hand for that. Beautiful, five. What we're going to do is, we're kind of going to go in order on the, on this list. So John, contestable?
Contestable, yep.
Yep. Now, what we're going to ask is, everyone else is going to go over to the break room while we ask these couple of questions, and we'll bring you back one at a time. So John will come over and get the other John, and so on and so forth as we do this.
We don't want them to know your secrets.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just give us one second until she gets back, and then we'll go from there.
I didn't realize there was such demand for the position. It's good to see.
I didn't know either.
It's the pay.
But I'm glad, yes.
The pay's pretty significant.
The pay's good, and the abuse is better.
I'm used to the latter.
Do we want to stick to these questions? Do we want to let John take a statement in the beginning? How do you want to do this, Borough Manager?
You're welcome to have them make a statement at the beginning.
We'll let you just make a brief little statement, and then I'm going to ask you five different questions, and we'll go through this process.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time. My name's John Conteswell up on Clearview Road. I'm in Ward Two. I'm interested in the Planning Commission position. I've been in the borough now for five years, moved here from Maryland. I had a long career in public service in Maryland. I worked for the Maryland Department of Transportation for 30 years. I started as a Highway Engineer One, I'm a civil engineer, and I retired as Assistant Secretary, so I'm well acquainted with budgets and transportation. And I used to chair public hearings for highway improvement projects, so I'm used to hearing a lot, hearing an earful from the public. So I just thought it's time to give back. We've been up here now about five years since we moved, and we've enjoyed it, and it's been great in town. I attended your open house not too long ago, and met the mayor, and met Eric Mainz, and he said, maybe I should apply for this. So here I am, happy to answer any questions.
Yep. We're going to go through a few questions here, they're pretty cut and dry. Number one, are you available on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM for meetings?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Number two, what is your understanding of the role of the Planning Commission, and why are you interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
I mean, the Planning Commission has an opportunity to comment and/or approve development plans in the borough, and that's something I have some background in. When I worked for the Maryland DOT, I spent half of my career at State Highway Administration, developing highway projects. I was also chief of what's called the Access Permits Division, which is where you have to apply to get entrance onto a state highway. So I approved, in my last year in that job, I was in that job about three-plus years, 800 permits for about $20 million worth of bonded work. So I've reviewed more site plans than most people have in their career. So I just wanted to, I felt that would be a good opportunity to give back, and I have a skill set in that area. Again, being a civil engineer, it's, it's not uncommon to look at plans and understand grading plans, stormwater management, all of the things that come along with it, erosion, sediment control, permitting, that's something I've spent a fair amount of my career on.
Okay. Moving on to question three. Describe your ability and/or experience rendering a decision where you disagreed with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree the rule and vote with the crowd majority.
Well, I think our job is to interpret the rules and interpret the regulations. And there's zoning regulations, there's, you know, state regulations on permitting and erosion, sediment control, and so forth and so on. So while there usually is some discretion, and in my experience, I've usually been able to negotiate to a win-win position, at the end of the day, you're called to render a decision that's impartial and, and in accordance with the rules, and that's what I'm prepared to do. I was in that position in many of my roles in public service. You saw, if you have my resume, I spent time as a city councilman in the city of Tawnytown. So I've, I've been in that position before. And I find that if you do it fairly, and you explain yourself, and you have good communication, that people may not necessarily like it, but they hopefully understand.
Some of these you kind of already touched on, but number four is, tell us about an experience you had collaborating and/or working with a group.
Gosh, I've chaired a number of committees in my career. From a volunteer standpoint, I was in the city of Tawnytown, I was, I chaired their comprehensive plan rewrite effort, and that obviously required public input, and then we had to draft the plan. So that's one occasion. I'm still active in various associations, I'm a member of America's Society of Civil Engineers, attend their meetings, the Transportation Research Board, TRB, which is a member of the National Academies. I chaired their resilience section for six years, and I chaired their critical infrastructure committee. So I've had a lot of opportunity to mediate between parties on committees that didn't see things quite the same way.
Okay, thank you. Number five, what else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Planning Commission?
Well, I think I have the background, I have experience. I'm interested in engaging with the community. I've always, I've always been participant in the communities I've lived in. We moved up here before COVID, which wasn't exactly conducive to getting engaged or involved. So I, we've had a chance to get settled and so forth, so I thought it would be a good opportunity to do so. I'm hoping to step back from full-time work in the next year or two, and that'll give me some opportunity to be even more engaged. So I just felt the time was right, and certainly the mayor and Eric encouraged me to do so. I think it's, looks like a good opportunity to me.
Okay, we appreciate it. Okay, if anybody else has a question?
I do a question. I'll be consistent, ask the question of every candidate. My question is, you've been here five years, have you volunteered or done anything in our community to get to know our community better?
Have I done, in the five years I've been here? Not necessarily, although I've attended all of the events from UTS days and Hanover days, and, and I've frequented some of the establishments downtown quite frequently. So, and I, and I'm an avid dog walker with two dogs, so there's probably about a two-mile radius around my house that I know most of the neighbors and, and most of the people in the community.
Guess I don't really walk a dog, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I can't say as I've formally done anything, this is the first formal opportunity, but I have been out and about, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have you, have you attended any Planning Commission meetings here?
Yes, I actually attended the last one, and did not have an, did not intend to participate, but I did.
Yeah, I was there, yeah.
Because it was for the hotel development that's proposed up off of Eisenhower, and I frequent that intersection quite a bit. And having worked for Maryland DOT, I'm fairly acquainted with the traffic signal at the corner there. So I expressed some concern about the signal timing, and I think they're going to take that under advisement, so.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
I'll go get John.
Yep.
Amy's, Amy's got it.
Do you'd like me to leave the room as well?
No, no.
Yeah, do you want him to leave, Bill?
What's it matter now? The cat's out of the bag, right?
Since you got to go first, you get to watch everybody else.
Just no coaching, no coaching.
Just give them your cards.
Don't leave the questions up there.
Yep.
Do you want to make a brief statement about anything, talk about yourself a little bit before I ask you these five questions?
Yeah, I'm a business owner here in Hanover, 252 Frederick. We own the Forney House Bed and Breakfast and Tea Room. Retired last May 31st from 41-year career in the NFL, and it's about it.
Okay. Real quick, pretty cut and dry. First question is, are you available on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM for meetings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What is your understanding of the role of the Planning Commission, and why are you interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
Well, I was here for a meeting, so I kind of got the gist of what was going on. Looks like you vet out a lot of projects that are going on in town. I feel like, in my career, I was involved with one stadium build, two facility builds, and various projects involving architecture, blueprints, you name it. Kind of got the gist from looking at that thing, that that's what you guys kind of dig through, and, you know what I'm saying, budgets, all that kind of stuff. So I have some familiarity with that. And then just want to provide the community. Have never had a chance to do that with my career, so, been too busy. And then being now a business owner and being involved, I think that's something I'd like to do.
Okay, great, thank you.
What was the name of, where was the business that you had in town? I'm sorry.
The Forney House Bed and Breakfast Tea Room.
That's true for me. Oh, and what's his name's old house?
The Stanbon Ness.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, got it. Sorry, thank you.
Moving on to the next question, number three. Describe your ability and/or experience rendering a decision where you disagree with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree with the rule and vote with the crowd majority.
I'd say, I mean, I just have to look at whatever's going on and give my best opinion to what's going on, not to be, you know, have anybody push me one way or the other. I would just go with my gut, which I've normally done in my whole life, so, yeah.
Okay. Number four, tell us about an experience you had collaborating and/or working with a group.
Oh geez. Well, I was on a committee for about 14 years in the NFL, basically working with the competition committee, handling for our, our sector, what we did for, for the league, coming up with rules and regulations, trying to push technology, trying to, you know, push other agendas that we had. So, yeah.
Okay. Number five, what else would you like to know about, what else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Planning Commission?
I'd say, at times I get very hyper-focused, attention to detail, think outside the box sometimes, yeah.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Any council members have any other questions?
I do have another question. Have you had an opportunity to get involved with any activities in our Hanover community to get to know people, and, other than working at your business?
I'll be honest with you, up until I retired, and then, I mean, our business, we are out straight. So, yeah, not, not a lot, but I, I mean, my wife could speak to some of the things that we've probably done. I mean, I'm new to this, so like, I'm coming in for 41 years doing what I did, and now I'm a bed and breakfast tea room runner. It's a whole new ball of wax for me. But, yeah, you know, we, we, we really do want to get more involved, and we've been trying to, you know, little bits here and there, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, John, we appreciate it. And you can sit back in your seat, and we'll bring the next contestant in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klump, thank you. Do you want to give a brief synopsis about you before we start answering these, these couple of questions?
Basically, I've been living in town now for the last, what has it been now? 23 years, since me and my wife moved our kids back up into town. Just recently retired as a firefighter from BWI Airport, which is the state of Maryland Fire Department. Did a lot with public safety, volunteer a lot at the school district, coached sports, helped with the ADR stuff, and also as an instructor for University of Maryland for a few years.
Okay, great.
What did you teach?
Fire rescue and hazmat.
Okay. I'll answer these couple of questions. Number one, are you available on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM for meetings?
Yes.
Okay. What is your, and number two, what is your understanding of the role of the Planning Commission, and why are you interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
I just wanted to look to get back to the community, since I've been living, living here for so long, and my kids are grown up, so I don't really do much volunteer work with the schools, other than help my wife at preschools, and she's co-director, that's about it. Planning Commission, I just read up what it was on there, saw what it had to do with, like, different requirements for plans, and see how the town's going to grow. And I'd really, really like to be interested in helping with that.
Describe your ability and/or experience rendering a decision where you disagree with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree the rules and vote with the crowd majority.
I'll be honest, I'm going to vote the way I want to vote. If I'm going to do what's right, what's right for the town, what's right for the borough. I've always been like that. If you even ask any of my employer down at the state, my chief will tell you. I probably butt heads a lot of times with that. I like to follow what the standards are. Can't really get around with standards and codes set, so, as long as they are what they are.
Okay, thank you. Tell us about an experience you had collaborating and/or working with groups.
Working with groups, did a lot of collaboration, especially in the fire department when I was in charge of the hazmat. We worked with the FBI, worked with the state teams, and then worked with local municipalities with the state teams. We did a lot of collaboration there between training, working out budgets for regional stuff, and ordering equipment around the town for the region.
Okay, great. Number five, what else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Planning Commission?
I'd like to put myself 100% into everything. So I'll give it my best, and if I don't know something, I will go look it up. So that's for sure.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
I do one question. Could you share any volunteer experiences you've had since you've lived here?
I lived here, basically, I did a lot of volunteering with the PTO and Pasta with the school district. I did volunteer in Carroll County before I moved up here. But when I was up here, I did work at Penn Township, and I was with Clearview for a couple of years. Other than that, that's a lot of my stuff was with coaching or doing recreational coaching for the kids as they were getting, growing up.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just one. Do you, sorry.
Sorry.
Are you a visionary? Do you have vision?
Yeah, I have vision. I like to see how the town's going to grow and what it's going to look like.
Do you have, like, a thought of it?
A thought of it? I like to see things get better. I don't like, to me, it seems like it's starting to get a little bit more crowded with all the different townhomes and apartments that are going in, and I'm just curious how the infrastructure's staying up. I know we went through at the airport with all of our infrastructure, which the airport takes up a little bit more land than what the borough takes up. And we were dumping billions into that place just to keep growing, and watching that impact of the town around it. So I just don't like the overcrowding part of it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Sean, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Do you know a gentleman named Paul Rea?
Paul Rea, yeah.
Okay.
They're all good people. Thank God, we all have good people.
All right, Mr. Beeling.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, first and foremost. You can have a seat.
Oh, I'm used to standing when I, I speak occupational hazard.
So, real quick, do you want to just give us a little quick synopsis of you before I start answering, asking you these questions?
Of me? Real quick, I'm, I'm a local, born and raised in Hanover, went to elementary school with one of your council members, graduated with the brother of the mayor, Tim, and, you know, grew up here. When I came back to the area, I got involved in genealogy, and that's how I found out how deep my, my roots went.
Okay, thank you.
You know.
Thank you very much.
Many generations.
Number one, are you available the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM for meetings?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Number two, what is your understanding of the role of the Planning Commission, and why are you interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
Well, my understanding is that you're supposed to, you know, look into the future as best that you can, try to ascertain the changes that are coming down the road, and position, position the borough of Hanover best to, to deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Number three, describe your ability and/or experience rendering a decision where you disagreed with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree the rules and the vote with the crowd majority.
Run that by, there were too many clauses there.
So, I'll read it one more time. Describe your ability and/or experiences rendering a decision where you disagreed with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree the rules and vote with the crowd majority.
Okay, got it, got it. Well, it wouldn't be with a municipality, but in my, in my work-life at the university, there were some decisions that were being made by the administration that the faculty did not think were in the best interests. And, you know, we voiced our concerns, vote went against us, and, you know, we did go along with it, but we kept voicing our concerns to try to, try to change the decision in the future.
Okay. Number four, tell us about an experience you had collaborating and/or working with a group.
Well, I'm a, I'm a retired college professor, and my departmental meetings, you know anything about university faculty, it's like herding cats. And so every, every month, the faculty meetings were always an adventure, because you'd have about 15 people that all had very strong opinions about exactly what should be done. In most cases, there's probably about this much difference between them all, but they all wanted to be heard, and they all wanted things done exactly the way they saw it.
Okay, thank you. What else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Planning Commission?
Well, I was thinking about this the last couple of days, and actually, some of my fondest memories as, as a small child took place probably within a block or so of this I used to love going across the street to, to see movies at the theater. Right next door to the theater, I believe it's where the new borough offices are going to be located, there was a Five and Dime store called McCrory's, and they used to have a snack bar. I loved the snack bar because they had a whole bunch of balloons above the snack bar, and if you ordered a banana split, you got to pop a balloon to see what the price was, and it could be free. 13 or 14 years old, I carried newspapers for the Evening Sun, and my father said, well, you've got a few bucks. He marched me over to the big marble building about a block from here on Carlisle Street, Bank of Hanover, and that's my first checking account. And then along about the holidays after Santa Claus came to town, there was a great big building, let's see, that would be the northwest side of the square, the Bon Ton. Loved the third floor, that's where the toys were. Then we'd go across the square, JCPenney. Then we'd go about two buildings down, and I believe it's the building across the alley from the parking lot, Montgomery Ward. Okay? Those are some of my fondest memories.
Okay.
What do they all have in common? They're not there. All gone. Okay, and I thought about it, and I thought, you know what? You need to plan ahead and do the best you can so that, you know, downtown Hanover is, you know, a thriving entity in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
I do have a question. Have you had any opportunity to volunteer in our town to get to know the people or?
In, in Hanover?
Yes.
Or just volunteer?
Yeah.
I've not. I came back to the area, I was away for 25 or 30 years.
Oh, right.
And then I came back to the area about 12 or 13 years ago, aging parent, retired here three and a half years ago, and it was great. I love retirement, but... here three and a half years ago. And it was great. I love retirement, but there's only so many walks around the neighborhood I can give my dog. Don't ask my dog that, by the way. He'd give a different answer. And I thought, well, it's time to get involved. Prior to this, I, former life, I was at Bloomsburg University, and I was involved with United Way. I was on the executive committee, and I was on the allocations committee, chaired the allocations committee. So I do have some community service.
Thank you.
Sure.
What did you teach? What did you teach at John when you were?
Well, that's where the hair goes. Headache work. I taught accounting. My background's accounting and economics.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Beeling.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yes. Oh, you can stay in the room here, Mr. Beeling, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Are we supposed to decide tonight? We're deciding tonight.
Hello, Ann?
I mean.
Okay, real quick, do you want to give us a brief introduction about Ann?
Sure. So my name is Ann Baker. I'm a Hanover resident. I also was born and raised in, in Hanover, Nighthawk graduate. And after 20 some years with the US government, I've retired, and I've chosen Hanover as my retirement location. So my basic experience that's relevant to this is I have about 25 years of operations management experience. About 20 years of that with the federal government, doing procurement, housing, leasing, facilities management, IT management, procurement, finance, a whole host of things for the federal government.
Okay, great. I'll get into these couple of questions. Are you available on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM for the meetings?
I am.
Okay. Number two, what is your understanding of the role of the planning commission, and why are you interested in serving on the planning commission?
So my understanding of the role of the planning commission is to, to set the strategic plan for the borough of Hanover. I recently read through the 2015 joint comprehensive plan between Hanover and Penn Township, and note that there are a number of very aspirational ideas in there from 2015 that I have seen Hanover's working on, but has not yet achieved. And I'm eager to help out with that. I will also say that my grandparents, who raised my dad in Amistown, and my parents have instilled a strong sense of public service in me, and I hope to be able to give back to Hanover.
Okay, thank you. Number three, describe your ability and/or experience rendering a decision where you disagreed with a rule, regulation, or had strong support from others asking you to disagree the rules and vote with the crowd majority.
Okay. So I would say that the majority of my time working for the State Department, I'm representing US regulations that many people often don't agree with. And my job was to figure out how to do operations effectively in the most cost-effective way that benefited the majority of the people that we were serving while not getting ahead or to the side of regulations. And so it involved a lot of understanding, first of all, what the regulations were, what the right-left boundaries were, and then building consensus to make sure that everybody understood that we were working in the best interest and trying to get everybody to that place where we all wanted to say yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Number four, tell us about an experience you had collaborating and/or working with a group.
[laughing]
I mean, pretty much answered that one.
Right, so very, very similar, but yeah.
Just rewind. Right. I gotta read them all. Number five, what else would you like to know about, what else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the planning commission?
So I think the, the fact that I have chosen to come back to Hanover as my retirement location, after living in many places in the United States and overseas, shows my dedication to making Hanover a better place.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from council?
I do one question. Do you share any volunteer experiences you've had, either here or where you are?
Sure. So throughout my career, I've done a lot of volunteer work. When I was in the Senate, I did congressional reading partnership, where we would read with elementary school kids to help their literacy improve. Overseas, I've done beach cleanups and, and community events like that. Since I've been back in Hanover for the past two years, I've volunteered to help out with Main Street Hanover events, the Chili Cook-Off, the Hanover Halloween Parade, and also the Gettysburg Wine Festival, which isn't technically Hanover, but still volunteer.
Wine's always fun.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now, let me make sure I get this procedural thing down right. Okay? So we're gonna ask for a motion? Yeah, please, just give a.
So as council has done in the past, we follow the open nomination process. So the chair will call for nominations. The nominations do not have to be seconded. Once all the nominations are made, we will close the nominations and then vote in the order that the nominations were received.
Does everyone understand that?
Yeah.
So I will be looking for nominations, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate John Contestable.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ann Baker.
Thank you. Any other nominees?
From the group?
I'll do Sean Clon.
Okay. Any others? Okay, so we will, now we go in order.
The first call for vote is for John Contestable.
Okay. And then, well, if we get to then?
Yeah, if there's a majority for both John and Ann Baker, then we don't take any more votes.
Just want to clarify that. Okay.
So we only get to vote once, or remind me how this happens, because this is confusing.
The first vote, I know, I know. The first vote is for John Contestable. So we'll take a vote. If there's a majority, then he's appointed to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Then we'll take the next vote for Ann Baker. If there's a majority, then she's appointed. And we take no further voting.
So everyone gets to vote both times?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Every time, or just the first time, it's decided the first time.
Correct.
So, Tim, just for me, I'm chair of the planning commission. Am I, is it okay for me to vote? Okay, I just want to confirm.
I would think so. I don't know. Just, I would hope.
Okay.
Government rules, baby.
That, that being said, we will vote for the first nominee, which is John Contestable. Are we roll calling this, or just?
Well, you, you probably, for a voice vote, we'll see how it goes. If you can't establish a majority, we'll do it.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries then. We will move on to the second, which is Anna Baker, or Ann Baker. Everybody knows what we're doing here, so I will call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So that is a majority, so congratulations, Ann and John.
Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, is there, is there any way that we can encourage other people who came to get involved?
Just getting there.
Yeah, thank you very much for the other three candidates, too.
I'm sure Margie can find a place. Get them involved.
Yeah, what is, see, that's not the way my paper looks. Bear with us one second.
It's wonderful that they all stepped up.
I know, we are type people. It never happens.
Never happens. It's wonderful.
And they're all really good. It's tough.
It's an unexp, fairly an unexpired term because we had two retirements.
Okay.
They're three-year terms.
All right. So the question she's asking is?
That should be six.
Yeah, that should be the six. Mine were the same, so I didn't stop it. One is 20, one is December 31st, 2025, and one is December 31st, 2026.
All right, so you're three, five due to that order. Council should understand.
Okay, real, real quick, if I can have everybody's attention, I'm gonna try to explain this. So our question sheet that I was reading from has a, has a blooper on it. One of the, one of the terms is till December 31st, 2025. The other term is supposed to be till December 31st, 2026, not 2025. Now that we see that, would you like to explain?
So my, my suggestion is that we appoint them in that order. So Mr. Contestable would be for the first term expiring December 31st, 2025, and Ms. Baker expiring December 31st, 2026.
And just to reiterate, we had two retirements from the, from the planning commission. So that's, that's why we're doing it that way.
Should we vote on two guess one spot, or?
Is, is, is council want to take that up as a vote, or does?
Or should we ask the candidates?
Well, they were thinking it was a three-year term, so are we okay?
But they could be reappointed.
I think we should ask the candidates.
Right. They get reappointed if they want to stick around.
Well, we still have, we still have to do it.
Right, 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 in December.
If, if council wants to actually vote on, on who fills what term, we can take that up now.
I think maybe we should, because it, it's just for suggestion, it appears as if the ayes were relatively equal, but there was a, a nay for one of the candidates. So it may actually be a countable number to determine which.
So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna call for the first one, which would be December 31st to 2025.
I would, I would, I think it's natural to think of the 2026 term as in the more, yeah, the more votes that the candidate gets, that that person would be given the longer term is probably.
Are you okay with that? I don't have to be okay with that, but that makes perfect sense.
Okay. Hey, I just want to make sure we're going by the.
We've already confused enough of us. Yeah, that's just, if that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense.
Okay. So the candidate for the longer term, the 2026 expiration date, would be voted on first.
Correct.
Okay. So, all those in favor of?
Do I need a motion for this?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for council's consideration, the, to appoint John Constable for the remainder of the term, which expires December 31st, 2026.
Do you need a second on that?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
I've got, you've got it.
All right. All those in favor of John completing the term till December 31st, 2026, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would similarly like to make the motion that Ann Baker be appointed to fulfill the remainder of the planning commission term, which expires December 31st, 2025.
So motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of Ann? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You did it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That was a confusion.
So we made it through.
I didn't look on here, it was right on here. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I would be looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
Should move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is that one through 5.8?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be 5-1 through 5-8 on the consent agenda, under the heading of consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I have, I have a question about 5.8A.
Okay.
Which one, Carol?
5.8, Community Development Block Grant Funding.
I'll give you two.
Is that the one? Yeah. I just have a question.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Wait, we're gonna sit here, we're stepping up to the plate.
Sorry, AJ.
Sure, no problem.
So this community block development grant for $300,000 for improvement of the sidewalks, possible street area on Hanover Street in front of the Hanover Elementary School, from York Street to Baltimore Street. If you recall, last year, we put in the application and council approved to do Lot 1 through the same program, which is the old Club 2000 lot on Baltimore Street. Because revenue was involved in that project, that the borough would receive revenue from that, we were asked to reconsider and look at a different project. It's actually been a windfall for us. It's about a little more than doubled the amount that we were gonna receive for that project. So now we're looking at $300,000 for an area that is desperately in need of rebuilding after a couple years of some pretty intense utility work over there.
In my reading, it was just unclear what you were doing for that money. I thought it was just in front of the school, and then it was from York Street to Baltimore Street. It was a little confusing when I read it.
Correct. And that is a no-match grant.
Thank you. I knew you were gonna, but one other question, AJ. I knew you, you made me a happy camper. Okay, so the project itself, for the curb and, and the sidewalks and things, $300,000, this is giving you permission to apply for that $300,000 grant. Hasn't been done yet.
Correct.
But the project, as I was reading it, okay, was that it should cost $400,000, because then you have to do the street repair after the curbing and the walk is done. Is that correct?
Sure. So, yes, this is the process that we all would like to happen every time, where all the utilities come through first, finish their work. Then we actually put the old, bring the sidewalks and curbing up to the original curb reveal there. So we'll have six to eight inches, like we would all like on some of these bigger paving projects, but just don't ever have the money or time available to us. So you'll have that first. Then we plan to follow that up with another project to finally get Mr. Cress's street there in front of his school, back to a nice, smooth traveling surface there.
Okay, now that other $100,000, that, that $100,000 from the 400 estimated cost.
So.
Give me some facts on that.
So that's, that's, that's what this project could go to as a possibility if the borough would do absolutely no work of our own there. It's possible that if we use contractors to do everything, it could cost up to that amount, which we have to give. But just like all of these projects, we try to put our own labor in there and do whatever we can for whatever phase of the job to stretch those dollars farther. And I don't see this being any different there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And if we could start that on the first day of school, that would be great.
Yes. It'd take school with consideration.
AJ, so one more. When is this project going to be finished? I mean, do we have an end date, or is it gonna go?
So, our, our goal is to try and start this summer. We'll see if it would finish this summer. If not, it would continue into next summer. It really all depends, too, when that's approved, when we would be allowed by the grantee, grantor, to start the project. So usually, it's right away. You can always get started on it. You take a chance of if it's going to be approved or not. We have a very good record with this grant. But we see work starting this summer. So with planning and design.
Okay.
When will we have an idea of when we would get that funding? When would they let us know about what date or?
So they, they are actually considering it this month also.
Okay.
So this is a step for them to say Hanover Borough is okay with it, and then the county would go ahead and put their stamp of approval on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second.
Motion.
So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Department, Department of Water Resources, 6.1. Do you need to talk about this at all, do you think, or, okay, pretty cut and dry. Authorized Council President Signature of the Form EGP, or, yeah, to move forward with necessary permitting for gasification projects.
I don't know. I think, I think there should be some discussion to the public about that. I mean, it's been a while since we talked about this. Even I'm a little, I forget. I just got this paperwork on Monday, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a project that has been working through the Stormwater Authority. So that's, that's why you haven't seen it come in front of council, because the authority has been taking it up on their agenda. And one of the things in the last two months they've asked for is regular monthly updates on it. So we've begun to update that board as things are moving. There's been a period of time where there hasn't been a lot going on as far as what the authority is doing, because that has been the, if you will remember, this is a public-private partnership. So the borough is not fronting the cost for the design, the permitting, and all the things. That's falling to the private partner to do those things. So they have been off working on those things, but they're at a point now, they're not able to submit that until we give them permission to do so, because it is this body's property. The Stormwater Authority does not own that property. So that's, that's what's going on with the project. So that's that's what's going on with the project. So we're looking to get the approval to submit the permits.
Okay, before we call the vote, any other questions for AJ?
Yes, I do. Okay, and it's going to be out in the Conawaga area? Where's that located?
So this project now will be located out Ram Drive. So at the end of Ram Drive, at the former regional treatment plant site.
Right.
As was mentioned earlier, we had been looking at a previous site, but we started to realize that that was going to create some issues for the township, and we certainly didn't want to do that for them. So we were able to fall back and look at this site. And so this site fits much better. It was an old plant. It sits in behind a massive food production warehouse now. So it's not really in anybody's yard. You're not going to be able to see it. All the noises and things that might be associated are all kept very contained. So it makes a lot more sense for it to be there.
I'm glad you did that because there was feedback from.
And I've been to talk to the board. We have been to Conawaga Township. We've gone to a couple of meetings now. I've been in contact with their manager to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to stay here for 6.02?
PA Walk Works Pedestrian Improvement Grant, so this is one of Darlene's favorites. This is a no match grant. Delta brought this one to us, actually. And so what this is doing is this specific grant looks at connectivity of pedestrian facilities, trying to improve the way in which people can get around things. This specific one, we're focused on the library because of it's a community asset and certainly having people be able to get to it very easily. So we're really looking hard at the sidewalks that are along Carlisle Street there from park up to the railroad tracks. If you've ever had the opportunity to walk that, you will notice there is zero curb reveal, which creates all kinds of issues for flooding. It's not really safe for pedestrians because it's just a uniform grade the whole way across. There's also some water issues that are currently happening down there. This was identified as an area for Stormwater Authority that they were going to be looking at some of the stormwater that needs to be addressed there. But this grant is specifically focused on the sort of surface level, the sidewalk part of it, so.
There's just one question. Grace, you had brought up a very good question online. You had asked about why the lights weren't up, you know, originally, Eric, we were talking about, and I think that was dashed, I hope it was, where you were going to bring the traffic in. Instead of going down Third Street, you were going to come in the other way. The lights were supposed to be there.
Yeah.
And I hadn't heard anything on that, so could you? It's not happening, thank you.
That was an older project, and certainly AJ can fill even more. It was prior to me, but there is a ton of paperwork I've come across that that was a thing, it got up to some point, and then it got kind of nixed.
Yeah, I thought maybe we all lay in on the dead case, but you know.
I will, you looking for a motion, please?
So moved.
I moved.
Second, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item under 7.01 preliminary slash final land development, it's actually a subdivision plan. So this is down near the French Quarter on York Street. And what is happening here is there actually, there's a private residence to the rear that the owner of the front lives in, and they want to separate that off so that there'll actually be two separate parcels at this point.
They want to separate which which it's the French Quarters that face York, yeah. And then his home, he lives in right next.
He lives in the corner down near Eagle Alley, yes.
And then that other building, he was doing a lot of repairs and rebuilding things because I remember he had a merry-go-round that he, it was miniature, but he was repairing it for somebody. So what's he wanted?
As a, he's not changing anything at all. All of the land uses are staying exactly the same. This is just simply creating a parcel that the house will sit on and creating a parcel that the front apartment building will sit on.
Okay, he wants to separate those.
That's all it is. There's no uses, there's no nothing else happening. It meets, the planning commission has recommended it for approval. There are some conditions and things we need to work through yet, but ultimately, planning commission was content with it.
You feel pretty safe with that project and how he wants to go about it.
It's just a simple subdivision.
He's a nice guy, yeah.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion, please.
I'm going to motion on that one.
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is 8.01, so this is relative to building change orders. And so this is one where this particular month, actually, we have a savings of $1,822 overall. So there was a series of change orders, but notably, one of them being a credit back, and it's a rather large credit. And so that offset the other ones and created some additional beyond that, so.
Are you going to read them?
I'm going to approve it.
I got to read them, don't I?
Yes.
Are you going to volunteer, Eric? Thank you.
I'll read them for you, absolutely. Change order number 34 for $2,772 for the replacement and repair of a masonry wall in the sprinkler room. Change order number 37 for $974 for the installation of a junction box in the lobby. Change order number 40 for a credit of $6,060 for reuse of existing HVAC wiring harnesses. And change order number 42, $492 for an additional rack to runway kit in the IT room.
Great, looking for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 802, York County Uniform Construction Code, Board of Appeals. Approve the resolution for adjustment for criteria for membership of the board. Pretty cut and dry, this was in our stuff. I'd be looking for a motion, please.
So motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one, 8.03, consideration of a motion to approve the conditional agreement. Same kind of thing here. This was in our packet. We'd be looking for a motion on that.
I'll motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll mention, I think he should buy it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Rowland. Any other discussion on this before we call the vote? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Nine, 10, and 11, we're all in our packet. Moving on to number 12, which will be additional public comment.
Aren't we going to discuss? Aren't we going to go under management reports? Reports of council members, committee, and other bodies in management reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, usually we just.
Sorry, Bob.
Thank you, Margie.
Sorry, Bob.
Okay, number nine, do we have any reports of council members?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, I didn't skip over, I read all these things. Number 10, we have any management reports?
Yes, we do, thank you for asking.
It would be nice if we had a little, a little thing right here that said, thank you, in the future.
Matt has something he'd like to report on based on a question y'all asked him at the last meeting.
But did you know this, Matt? Okay, great.
Did she give you the answer?
I did not.
I tried, buddy.
All right, so we had some questions about the summer playground program that the Y puts on every year. So one of it was the background of the people that the Y employs, and everybody is certified in pediatric first aid and CPR, mandated reporter training, child abuse clearance, state police background clearances, FBI and fingerprinting, and NSOR, which is the National Sex Offender Registry. So the people that are being hired by the Y to run the camps on our behalf are pretty well certified, and they start at $1,350 an hour because of the amount of certifications that they do have to have. So that's very important to keep in mind.
Matt, who paid for the surveys? Did the borough pay for the surveys?
The Y does.
The Y did.
The Y takes care of it. Well, Y takes care of the background checks and stuff, and then some of the stuff that is required of the staff, they're taking care of at their own expense.
Okay.
Again, because of the certification, they get $1,350 an hour to start. They do get a small raise every year if they come back. I think the highest paid one, based on the number of years, will be $1,750 this year.
$1,750 is nice, okay.
They begin contracting with staff in January. So they've pretty much got all of their staff in place for 2025. That's a process they begin at the beginning of the year, and they do return most people each year.
How many staff do they have? How many individuals?
Two people to each park.
Two people for the parks.
Two people to each park site, yes. Just some stats of the four camps that we ran in 2024. DeGai Playground had 377 kids attend. That was the highest attended park.
What was the number?
DeGai, 377 kids attended.
Seventy seven.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, is that from the activity program itself?
Yes, yes.
How did they sign up for that program?
They sign up, it's a drop-off program, and the parents sign up.
How did the parents find out about it?
We advertise it through our social media. We advertise it on our website on the Parks and Recreation page. And we, the Y also does advertising, and then Valerie puts it in the Borough Newsletter as well.
Matt, will you explain the difference between a playground site and a playground program?
Okay, so a playground site is the playgrounds that we have in the borough.
That's right. Seven, eight of them?
Yes, seven of them. The program is held at four. That's the, the program itself is held at four of the playgrounds in town.
Correct.
And the one thing that the program has in common at all the sites is there is a pavilion, which is a requirement of the Y, so there's shelter and a safe place if the weather would go bad.
You're talking of pavilions?
Yes, mhm. So DeGai averages 12 kids attending per day. Hanover Street Elementary averaged eight kids per day. Malfield and Elm Avenue also, they are six kids per day.
How many?
Six kids per day.
Six.
But the number varies based on the programming. The number also varies based on people's schedules.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a printout on that.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. How many, Bear?
Bear does not have a program at this time. Bear was actually dropped as a site in 2020 due to lack of attendance.
Well, 2020 and 2021, okay, you're not going to discuss this now, was COVID.
Correct.
So everybody's numbers were down. And I'm telling you, and we've talked about this before, my children are in a overpopulated area and densification. And I think all of you sitting here have to hear and listen carefully to what we're doing. If we do a program for one, then we should be doing it for all. And we should be taking the time out to run more. In fact, I would love a message box set up on each playground and have, and you can use Plexiglas, whatever. Put it on the playground so that parents, et cetera, can read it and know what's coming up, so that they can register their children. However, I have between 30 and 35 children when they come out, May, June, July. And some, because of the densification of my area, where they have taken historic homes, put them into two to four bedroom apartments, okay, I have more children. And so they need something for the summertime. And they live in apartments where there is no lawn, there is no green grass. And I'm just going to tell you, I have children coming out of the apartments like at the corner of York and Pleasant Street. They have no yard. They're up in those buildings. And before we take this to test, I want a pavilion. And if we can find $145,000 for a dock out at the Long Arm Dam, and my taxpayer parents with their children have no activities because I'm in the center of town, we are doing.
They can, March, but they, or.
We are doing, will you let me finish, Scott? I'm just asking for the time here, okay? I am loaded with densification. I live it every day. Now, when that was decided, you should have looked to the safety of the children, what was involved. If you give to one, Scott, you give to all the children.
But the children should go to the other parks.
I wanted $9,000, let me finish.
I am going to let you finish, now how about let me talk?
No, because I'm going to forget this.
Mrs. Funk, he's chairing the meeting.
I'm going to forget this.
He is the meeting chair, you have to respect that.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the program, okay? And I have to see the pain out there, and I have to see the children that don't have the activity. I'm loaded with them. I came to you, Tim, and I said, you know, have you talked to people about this? You sent me to someone, but don't give me the number of 2021, that was COVID. And I also should have had, they had a pavilion. It wasn't grandiose like the Kiwanis, but that got torn out when you tore the old playground equipment out. It just got taken down, nobody asked about it. And I'm told I have to have a pavilion to set this up. Now, you want to give my children, my children, my ward, one, a Thursday throughout the summer where you're going to come try to make this, it could change, where you're going to give them one day a week, Scott, in which they're going to come out and read a book and possibly do an activity, whereas the other ones are going to get five out of five. What are you doing to our area? Then, my parents said to me, they're very upset, well, will they, could they bus our kids? I brought this up to you after the library board meeting. And that's going to be a lot of money, right? And so they said, well, can the borough bus them? Well, you can set your hair on fire, okay, because it's going to be salty.
Now, listen, I appreciate your comment, okay? We know that the program is not run by the borough, it's run by the Y.
No, 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 no. You you are trying to.
I am not trying to do anything but try to explain it that you can understand.
We, the taxpayer parents pay that bill, Tim. That, the taxpayers pay the bill. I mean, I'm trying to be fair here, and you're trying to railroad over it.
No one is trying to do that.
No, 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 you're saying they make up. If they knew that we had this problem, they would have done better. And my, no, and my numbers over there are high.
Yes.
How can you?
Counselor Funk, I believe the chairman is trying to run the meeting.
Right, and what I'm trying to tell you.
Are you going to let me talk tonight for about five minutes? Are you going to let?
I was duly recognized to speak there, and you just talked over me, you interrupted.
I did talk over you because you're trying to interrupt me.
Rules of how we run our meetings, and I find it rude.
Robert's rules are to shut us down and not talk.
That's not true.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. Listen and don't talk.
Everyone's entitled to an opinion.
All I'm saying to you is, I found out evidence. You said to me that there was more vandalism on Bear. I went over there, there is not at this time, but every one of those parks had vandalism. And I went to Union Park. And if you have a fountain over there that's been completely vandalized, completely, you have a porta potty there, you have Work Park that gets over 60 kids a day, and you have no water fountain, that's not acceptable. My Bear, you, it is not acceptable. I will fight you in this the whole way through. You find a place and you find somebody that's been investing in my fifth ward and overpopulating it, and then you go to them and say, hey, you want to invest some of that skin back in the game? And build a pavilion?
Okay, I think we got your point.
You did? Well, let me tell you, I went to every playground.
Great.
And I found the numbers, and you all have to wake up here, you all have to listen to what you're doing to the children, you can't pick four out of seven and say the rest are gonna subside with one day, my taxpayers are paying for this program, and when you initially override those children, 30 to 35 kids in my area, are you being fair?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Y is looking at that after we get a pavilion there.
That is correct.
To turn that it back into a playground.
When, when do you have, when do you have some type of positivity now?
The plan, and A.J. can back me up on what I'm about to say, is the long-term plan with the Y is to add Bear Avenue back in 2026, changes were made at Bear Avenue when the new playground equipment was put in, the existing pavilion there was removed because it was dilapidated, and it was a subject of vandalism.
I was over there, Matt, it wasn't that bad, but I'm gonna tell you another thing, why didn't you take the program with the Y and say to them, we'll alternate playground, or, we'll alternate every other week, we'll use the same.
Because we don't have a pavilion there, which is something that the Y stipulates that they want to have there.
We had all winter to take care of that, from January, February, March, we had time, and we didn't do it, Tim, I'm sorry, when it comes to our children, they deserve more, what do you want, you want a boat out in, I'm not against it totally, but why do you want a boat out in the middle of our drinking water when you could take $9,000 at that, no, or 20?
Once, once again, I believe everybody, does anybody here not understand her point? That she can continue to talk?
I don't wanna wait for 2026.
Well, I, we, we got that.
I wanna do something, no, because you shove it off.
We don't, we don't run the program, we're not shoving it off.
You shove it, yes, you do.
Once again, let me reiterate, pay attention, please tell her what the Y is planning to do.
The Y is planning on adding Bear Avenue in 2026, that's part of all.
A year later, what's, what about my children this summer?
They're gonna have a tough time finding staffing, getting clearances.
No, 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 I even came up with that, it is that we have people who are retired, grandparents, and, and, no, and they love children.
They would have to get their clearances, they would have to work for the YMCA.
Why couldn't they assist by running as part of that program? It's not gonna be any more, any less, and it can subsidize their social security with additional money, you're not, you're not thinking out of the box.
They could have applied for those jobs just like everyone else did.
I don't think this is the place to have the debate.
I appreciate what you're saying, we understand where you're going with it.
Well, I'm not gonna get off this high key.
Nope, no one said you had to.
Because you guys made a mistake, and you left my children down, and you don't have a fountain at Work Park in the dead of summer, you have a gate that is off the toddlers', uh, area, and they have to take buggies over, and they have to block that opening up, uh, or block it, so the children don't get out.
And you can address this with him?
Tim, I, I'm doing, I did my job, I did my job.
Great, we appreciate it, I'm planning on, uh, moving on.
Yep, I bet you are.
If there's anything else, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gley, we got that manager report in there?
It's not funny, it's not funny what you're doing, you're grinning, this is not, you know what, Tim?
We'll discuss this afterwards, thank you.
This is embarrassing, no, it's embarrassing because you left the children down, you didn't go further, you just did the program, and you're, you're throwing it on the YMCA, and I will not do that to them, they are limited.
Moving on to, uh, correspondence and information, do you have anything there? Thank you, moving on to additional public comment, Mr. Holt?
Wait a minute, are we gonna approve, I mean, are you going through with this and not gonna try to work something in for the summer?
I, I.
Mr. Chairman, run the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Holt, please.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Holt from the Third Ward, um, tonight, you voted on a gasification plan, and admittedly, not all of you understand what you voted for, and that means the public really doesn't understand what you voted for, and this demands a public hearing, it can't wait until someday at some point, somebody at the Department of Environmental Protection decides, oh, wait a minute, we gotta have a public hearing when we're this far down the road, and you need to have it now to hear the, the local input, uh, about what people want in this community, and I don't think they're gonna want this, um, particularly the people in Conewago Township, um, you know, people come here, I hear it all the time, and they say they come here because they can't stand anymore, and they leave feeling unheard, they feel like their questions aren't answered, they don't get responses, and I come here because I can't stand any less, any less unfair treatment to people who aren't on the favored list, I won't stand for that, and I just, you know, you, you, it's like with this 33 Frederick Building, you did that without a public hearing, you did that without any substantial public input, it just rolled it on through, and you're gonna do the same thing out there on the reservoir properties where you're setting up a steering committee, and it's not gonna be held in public, and for this, sir, I will, I will challenge that, I will spend money on that, we will, we will see each other on that, because that is not right, that is wrong, the public deserves to have input on that, and things should not be done in a back room where Carroll County representatives are invited, West Mannheim Township representatives are invited, Chamber of Commerce representatives are invited, but the general public cannot attend, and that is not right, we're gonna go to head-to-head on that one, I'm gonna spend some money, I'm sure.
Okay, anything else?
And, I'm, I'm, this open container law is an issue I'm not gonna give up, this is the personal one for me, that Governance Committee held this so-called fact-finding, and that was a sham, and I can only just use one expression that is rarely used in my world, and that is loss of confidence in the Governance Committee, I set that up so that the overwhelming majority of the viewpoints heard were business, and hardly any of the public got any ample notification, they certainly didn't get emails from the borough telling them what was gonna be discussed, people are afraid, people are afraid to go out of their houses in their residential neighborhoods, people stand and sit in their houses and tremble a little bit sometimes when they hear people loitering outside their houses, the disorderly conduct, the other things that go on, it's gonna happen, you might as well just save it, save yourself the grief, because there's an overwhelming sentiment in this community that people shouldn't be allowed to walk through residential neighborhoods with open containers and drink in front of their houses without any concern, and here's the real alcohol-infused logic, beer logic, I'll call it, so, one of the proponents of not having, opponents of the, not of the open container law, he says, well, did you call the police? Well, what, how, why would I call the police when the mayor tells me it's legal for people to stand outside our houses and drink alcohol without any concern, the police chief tells us, that's the law, the borough manager says, yeah, that's legal, so why would you call the police, where is the logic in that? So, I don't know, sir, I, it just doesn't fit, but if you're not gonna take this issue on seriously, engage with the community in real discussions, in real hearings, go out where people are instead of standing in a room and waiting for them to come to you, then, I don't know, but this is not gonna go away, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And, and I know it's grace, I can't read your handwriting, I apologize.
No, I was doing it fast.
Matt something.
Of the essence. So, I just, this whole, well, I, addressing what Matt said, we can, I mean, I think you're not, as a council, going to the right place, the bishop, Valerie, we're helping for Hanover, where we've got over 100 people that, that, with organizations that are willing to help, now, I don't mean that you can, I, I'm just saying, I, and I, I operate a Just Serve Network for volunteers, and Matt and I were just talking before about that, that perhaps these volunteers could do crosswalks at the playgrounds, you know, I, I know that this is very frustrating, I love, I, I really think Hanover has just risen so much in the, in the past four years since I've been here, I hate, I hate to see people so annoyed that we can't be perfect yet, um, I mean, I think we got an awful lot of people at that meet and greet for, for, for what I expected, because people don't wanna go out and have meetings, we keep saying we want, I know, Rob, that we should have public hearings, but if I asked 50 people to come to a public hearing, probably three would show up, they just don't do that kind of thing anymore, I don't know why, but they don't, anyway, but, but what, what I'm trying to say, what I, all I really wanted to say is, I think we can help with the playgrounds, I told Matt, I think we can help with the playgrounds, I can't make the Bear Playground better.
Right.
Um, but I think there are an awful lot of people, and a lot, I have all my clearances, and the people I work with, this teen program we're starting, they all have their clearances, that, if, if we, if we, if we, we, we use the sugar instead of the vinegar, I think we can get people to, to get this playground going, we've got enough really good people in Hanover.
We do.
And, and we can do this, just, um.
We do.
You know, we've, we've got to approach them with. Well, Gracie, I want you to find the money for me, for 20,000, no, I'm, I'm telling you, it rests on, on money, and if we spend 145,000.
This is public comment.
I can't, I can't. I'm talking to Gracie, she and I are communicating.
You're not the public.
I am, on John Q. Tim, I gave you, I gave you the statute that I'm allowed to talk because John Q. Public comes before me being a counselor and representing the people, but I am representing them.
Yes, we understand that.
And what I'm saying to you, Gracie, is, I'm asking for $20,000 of the 145 out at the dam, find it somewhere else and give my kids and give all, all of it back to the people that live in this borough, and that these children need this.
I think if you go up to the Hope for Hanover, you can get donations to help with it.
I would love, I would love that, Gracie, and I'm willing to talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, it's okay, it's okay. Okay, anybody online?
For those of you that are not, if you're joining us online, you're free to unmute yourself if you'd like.
Hasn't killed themselves.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll make a couple announcements here, it's at the end, reminder of the council retreat is this Saturday, March 22nd, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., uh, we have a conditional use and public hearing on March 26th, uh, at 6:00 p.m., and the moving date, everybody knows that the Borough Office will be shut down as we move across the street, uh, which will be Thursday, April 10th, Friday, April 11th, and Monday, April 14th, and Community Media will cover, coverage will not be available on April 16th and the 23rd. Good, and the ribbon cutting for 33 Frederick Street is Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. Come to number 14 on here, adjournment?
Move to adjournment, sir.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, relax.
Opposed?